Good evening and welcome to the Township Howell Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, December 19th, 2024. It is the last meeting for 2024. Okay, opening statement, Eileen?
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner: First, on January 5th, 2024, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 5th, 2024, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 5th, 2024, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Cristiano has been excused. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio has been excused. Mr. Tannenhouse, I have not heard from. Mr. Withers, I have not heard from. Mr. Rebel?
Here.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Carbonic?
Here.
Chairman Husser is excused and Vice Chairman Mercer is taking over the meeting.
Here.
And you are here. So you have a forum. Thank you.
Okay, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the men and women here and abroad, in uniform, here and abroad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First order of business, approval of minutes from the regular meeting, November 7th, 2024, two eligible voters, Councilwoman Fisher and myself, to have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
And Chairman Mercer?
Here, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Correspondents?
Yes, I have a letter from Attorney Michael Herbert. He is the attorney for case number SD-3013, Besidore LLC. He said unfortunately, they haven't gotten their revised plans done yet, and asked if we could please adjourn this for tonight to a future date. I told him it would have to be carried to January 2nd for scheduling purposes, as that's the only other date we have, and he was okay with that, and we'll have a future date after that. So that will not be heard this evening.
Let me just make an announcement on that. The application of Besidore LLC, case number SD-3013, be carried to the boards' January 2nd, 2025 meeting. That is a live meeting beginning 7 o'clock here in the main meeting room at Town Hall. This will be for scheduling purposes only. It will not be a substantive application. There will be no further notice to property owners.
And I also have an email from Matthew Passata. He is the attorney for SP 1127, Diversified Acquisitions LLC. There was a question about dates when they were here last, so we carried them to tonight for scheduling purposes. He asked that we please carry it again to January 2nd for scheduling purposes with no further notice, and he'll take a future date at that time.
Okay, so the application of Diversified Acquisitions LLC, case number SP 1127, be carried to the boards' January 2nd, 2025 meeting, is a live meeting beginning 7 o'clock here in the main meeting room in Town Hall. There will be no further notice to property owners, and that will be for scheduling purposes only.
That's all I have unless anybody has any comments on the draft meeting dates that I handed out at the last meeting.
No. No?
Okay, we can discuss them at the reorg, so that's all.
Resolutions?
I have no resolutions this evening.
Just as far as transparency, so the January 2nd, I know that's, you know, the voting in the new board, does...
Well, we're not voting in the new board. The board gets appointed.
Appointed. Thank you. So then, so January 2nd, we'll, you know, regardless of whatever's being heard, we'll still have a meeting so that the the board can be revoted, correct? That's when the voting?
If there are matters that are in progress, and that's not the first meeting, then new members, if there are any, would be responsible for listening to the tapes in order to be eligible to vote, but they could still sit and participate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have submission waivers. First one for case number SP 1130, Vandevere Industrial Partners LLC, minor subdivision and preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members and Board professionals. Kenneth Pape of the firm Hilebrand Pape, on behalf of your applicant, and I defer to your engineer's comments on the waivers as they are set forth in her report.
Yes, sir.
You swear or affirm the testimony you are about to provide this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a November 8th, 2024 review letter. The submission waivers are specifically outlined in item 3. I take no exception to the granting of them with the exception of checklist item 60, which is drainage conveyances within 2,000 feet downstream of the property, as well as providing a soil erosion and sediment control plan, just because that's going to ultimately be required. So I recommend those be required in order to deem the application complete.
Understood and accepted by the applicant.
Okay. Anybody else?
We would just need a vote on it, Mr. Chairman.
A vote, okay. All right, make a motion to approve the submission waiver from minor subdivision, preliminary, and final major site plan.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
A motion by Mr. Greenfield and a second by Councilwoman Fisher. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Mercer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have the next one, too.
Next one, okay. All right. Case number SP 1131, Vandevere Industrial Partners LLC, preliminary, final, major site plan, and ancillary design waiver relief. Go ahead.
Kenneth Pape, on behalf of the applicant, and again, Mr. Chairman and Board members, defer to your engineer.
You swear or affirm the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So, Mr. Chairman, similarly, we have a report dated November 19th, 2024, with a submission waiver specifically outlined in item 3. I take no exception to the granting of these waivers with the exception of checklist item 60, which is the drainage conveyances within 2,000 feet downstream, as well as the soil erosion and sediment control plan, which is item 90. I would note, I would have otherwise also requested a Woodlands Management Plan, but they do have no tree removal proposed. So with that and the balance, I take no exception of the granting of the waivers, with the exception of items 60 and 90, the application would need to submit those in order to be deemed to complete.
Thank you.
Again, on behalf of the applicant, understood and accepted.
Okay. Take a motion to approve the submission waiver for preliminary and final major site plan for Vandevere Industrial Partners LLC, SP 1131. Motion. Okay.
Second?
To approve.
I'm sorry, who was the second then? Oh, Brian, thank you. Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Rebel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
And Chairman Mercer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you. Happy holidays. You're done for the night?
I'm sure.
Happy holidays. Okay, and then, application for the board is case number SP 1123, SMC Properties LLC, preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Before I get started, I'm just going to hand out copies of our PowerPoint presentation, if that's okay?
Well, why don't we just get started by entering your appearance, and then we can do that?
Good evening, members of the board. Alex Sirvideo with JJJ Law Firm on behalf of the applicant, SMC Properties LLC.
Counsel, just before we get started, just up to you and your client, obviously, you see we have five members. You know, you would normally be entitled to nine members voting. It's up to you if you want to proceed tonight. You would need three of the five to to get an approval.
That's okay. We'll proceed tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so now you can distribute the PowerPoint. Do we have that marked, anyone?
I'm marking it now as A16.
Okay, so we'll mark this as, we'll mark this as A16.
I have one for myself.
Do you want the rest?
I'll take them.
Eileen?
I can't find the drive.
It should be there.
It should be here.
No, go to PC, can you see? It should be there.
We're going to have to cancel this meeting.
Do you want this one to sign my plan up?
Of course, I know, but the card dealership.
Which one do you want?
My girl to show windows.
She can put through.
Yeah, that's what it says.
Sorry.
But you're younger than me anyway.
I'll order a pair of scissors.
Was it a buffer?
Maybe a landscape plan first.
Okay.
It was the two buffers of the mini size.
I thought I'd put it on.
Sign.
That one is.
It's coming on now.
Okay.
Okay.
We're just waiting for the screen to turn on, counsel.
Okay.
But you can get started.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board. Like I stated, Alex Sirvideo with JJJ Law Firm on behalf of the applicant, SMC Properties LLC. With us this evening is Steve Malatos in the audience, the developer of the project. We also have with us Richard DiFolco, professional engineer and professional planner, as well as Scott Kennel, traffic expert for the project. We're here tonight seeking variance and waiver approval to construct a 20,000-square-foot flex space building, which is a permitted use in the HD4 zone, which the property is situated in. The proposed building will consist of eight individual units with garages and office space, as well as other ancillary site improvements, as you'll hear about this evening. We comply with all relevant bulk requirements, but are seeking two buffer variances and assigned variance, as well as some waivers, as Mr. DiFolco will go into this evening. You'll also hear from Mr. Kennel regarding the traffic and circulation at the site, touching upon the new striping and designated left-turn-only lane within Route 33, which will provide safer access to the site. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. DiFolco, professional engineer and professional planner.
You swear or affirm the testimony you are about to provide this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Richard DiFolco, D-I-F-O-L-C-O.
Okay, counsel, if you could qualify, Mr. DiFolco.
Mr. DiFolco, could you please provide the board with the benefit of your background education and experience?
Yes, graduate of Rutgers University, licensed engineer since 1977, and a planner since 1982, state of New Jersey.
Mr. Sirvideo, you can sit at either table if you want, because those are, they're...
They'll be my seat.
They don't have to stand.
And we ask that the board accept Mr. DiFolco as an expert in the fields of professional engineering and professional planning?
Will accept.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DiFolco, can you please start by describing to the board the site plan touching briefly on the existing conditions and then touching upon the proposed site improvements? And Ms. Newman, I'll ask, could you please click to the slide number... Slide number 11 of our PowerPoint, which is the landscape plan? Great, thank you. Mr. DiFolco, I have the landscape plan up here, so you can go ahead and identify the existing conditions, as well as the site improvements identified on this plan.
All right, well, the site is known as 985 Route 33, Block 183, Lot 22. It is across the street from the Cabin Restaurant, if you're familiar with the Cabin Restaurant. A brief history of the site. The application was approved by this town's zoning board about five years ago for a medical use, and during the building process, there was some difficulty with the state of New Jersey and the health regulations, and that project never got built. It got started, the applicant posted bonds, inspection fees, cleared the site, and then during construction, we hit a roadblock and it was stopped.
Can I just interject for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
This is not the plan we have. This is the old plan.
Yeah.
That's the right one, but the balance of the sheets are not consistent.
All right, so just go to the site plan sheet, then. The PDFs that were submitted a couple of weeks ago were the correction PDFs. These might have been an older set that got somehow mixed into the file.
Continue now that we have the update.
Okay, so, so in a nutshell, the site was cleared, and if you drive by it today, it is still cleared, and the applicant rethought the process and is going back now with a flex space application. Since the original application, the town rezoned this to HD4, so that's a new zone that he took advantage of. It allows flex space, and that's what he's proposing to do. We meet the bulk requirements. There's several variances that he is seeking on the buffer. As a brief overview, the site, as I mentioned, is across the street from the Cabin Restaurant. To the west of the property is DOT right-of-way and a farm field. To the top of the map, or the north of the property, is a residential use. To the right side is a commercial yard, and the fire department has a fire station adjacent to our property as well. The applicant is seeking to build 20,000 square feet of flex space, a loop driveway with a 30-foot width, two dumpsters, a stormwater basin, and a divided entrance out to Route 33, to improve Route 33 with a dedicated left-turn lane into the site for eastbound traffic, and to widen Route 33 across the site frontage. The applicant is also proposing parking on this plan, which shows the most intense use that we believe would be on the site, to show that there's adequate parking on the site. With respect to the variances that are required, both the engineer and the plan are called out the variances that are needed in their correspondence. We require a variance for disturbance of the landscape buffer, which is in the area to the north of the property. It actually forms an inside corner, so the buffer that's proposed runs along the entire westerly boundary, a 50-foot wide buffer, and along the top of the property, a 50-foot wide buffer. At the very top of the northeast corner there, there's a rear dwelling which has access through an existing easement out to Route 33 across to this lot, which presently runs the entire length of the sideline. That long easement is proposed to be eliminated and replaced with the angled driveway easement, which is 45-degree angle approximately, to enter our access driveway, minimizing the amount of disturbance within the buffer area to provide access from that residential lot out to Route 33. And where the existing gravel driveway exists, that will be landscaped, it'll become part of the farmland buffer to the west, and it'll be landscaped also on the north to be part of the residential buffer. So there's two buffers, but we're minimizing the amount of disturbance by relocating the driveway from where it is now along the entire sideline to just that short piece. It's about maybe 20%, 25% of its present length. We believe that because of the situation with the existing driveway and the minimization of the new access and the topography of it, we believe that would be a hardship for the applicant not to be able to cross that easement, and we're seeking C1 variance relief for the driveway to cross the easement and provide access to the lot in the back at the shortest distance possible. And we basically have between the residential lot and our property, a 50-foot wide buffer, with the exception of the short driveway cut-through, which exists today. Also, to the, to the characteristics of the buffer easement to the residential do not have four, two of the four required elements. We have landscaping, and we have a fence, but we do not have a berm. There is a portion of that existing buffer that has trees within it, and to build a berm would be detrimental to the remaining trees. We can place a shallow berm, three or four feet, but a six-foot berm we could not do. And the elevation of the property where the easement ends is about six feet higher than the property where the driveway enters, so there is a six-foot grade change in that area. And we could add more to it and add about three or four feet, but we can't get a six-foot berm in that area because of the trees that are in that, the west, I mean, the eastern portion of that existing buffer. So...
So my only, my recommendation, and this has been in our report, it's also been brought up at TRCs, one, this site was cleared based off of plans that were done at the zoning board, and it didn't appear that that was maintained, and we had recommended a site walk with our office, specifically with Sherry as the CTE, and we also questioned why this area wasn't bermed and recommended that a field visit be scheduled so that we can review this material. So while I understand that the board is hearing this tonight for preliminary and final, and should we advance, I would not recommend final approval because we haven't had the opportunity to do that.
To visit it, right? Okay. I have a question. This, you're saying this was approved five years ago. Was this design, is this design the same now?
No, it's a different driveway, different building, it was a different use.
Different layout, okay, okay.
Similar, but different.
I don't think any of us were here five years ago, so.
And it was the zoning board.
It was the zoning case.
Oh, it was just zoning, okay, I'm sorry, okay, gotcha.
It was not a permitted use.
Right, gotcha, okay.
All right, so we agreed to do that site walk at any time with Sherry. But I think the solution would be to put a shallow berm, perhaps four feet, and increase if we need be the the buffer material.
And again, Mr. Chairman, just because this is a variance, it's hard, I mean, the board should be able to understand. It can't be, I think we can do, or we can do. It's a variance, so the board should understand what level of relief is necessary.
So the level of relief necessary is to not build a six-foot berm. We have a family...
Respectfully, we've been asking you to meet with Sherry for months. Laura's letter was dated April, or in the end of December. The meeting should have taken place, and I agree with Laura, at this point, you know, if you want to proceed with preliminary, that's totally fine, but I would also not recommend final until you complete the actions that we had recommended and meet with Sherry. And that's not something unique to this application. We actually make that recommendation at every single TRC unless there's like absolutely no trees on the site at all. So, like, the back and forth is, is, I don't think it's productive, so that would be the recommendation, and the board can choose to act one way or the other. But this should have been done in the past 10 months.
Well, the board can consider that, you know, when it, when it's considering the totality of the, of the evidence. I guess my only question moving forward at this point, counsel, is, is the applicant going to voluntarily seek only preliminary tonight, or are you still seeking preliminary and final, and the board will decide how it wants to proceed?
Can we have just a brief conference with our client?
Yeah, we could, we can take as long as you want, Mr. Sherry.
Do you need five minutes?
Five minutes would be good.
Okay, take five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will now take a recess until 7:30?
Were you on the zoning board? Were you on the zoning board? When, when, five years ago?
We're going to...
The board will now reconvene?
Okay. Go ahead.
We've discussed with our client, we will proceed, since we are this evening seeking just preliminary approval, and will return for final once the site walk has been completed.
Well, I don't think that's what they were asking. They were asking that there be a meeting with Sherry in the field so that whatever's going to happen is depicted on the plans, not post-site work.
That's what I meant, is the site walk with the team to make sure everything's going to be depicted properly. Yes.
So you want to move forward with the preliminary, but not final?
Correct. Tonight, we are just seeking preliminary.
Pending the site visit.
Correct.
Okay.
So, Mr. DiFolco, also, when you were testifying with regard to the variance relief, you mentioned specifically the C1 hardship variance. I think it would probably be advisable to place C2 flexible variance testimony on the record.
All right, so for the C2 variance, I believe that this would be a better plan for the township because the amount of the existing easement would be drastically reduced to a smaller amount. More landscaping would be provided, and it would be a benefit both aesthetically and appearance-wise for the visual, the visual impact would be better with a larger buffer by moving the driveway out of the easement and creating a short easement through the, through the buffer, because the easement exists today. So we'd like to eliminate it from the buffer and angle it through at a shorter distance and have more trees and less gravel.
Mr. DiFolco, can you touch on the signage variance that we're seeking as well?
Yeah, Section 256-5B says that each legally existing business shall have its own freestanding, in its own freestanding building shall be limited to a total of two signs, and we have more than two. We have one monument sign at the highway, and we have, the plan is for eight different tenants, so above each door, we have a small placard above the door, right there, yeah, and that would identify the tenant within the space that is being allocated for the tenants. The ordinance allows a sign area equal to 25% of the facade, and we're nowhere near that. We are much lower than 25%, although we wouldn't want to have one large sign across the whole front of the building, but we have eight small signs aesthetically pleasing. It's also not directly visible from Route 33. We're kind of turned at an angle because of the way the property's situated, so we're at an angle to the highway, and it's only visible to pretty much those that park in front of the building. As you're traveling down the street, it's difficult to see at that angle any of the signage on the... We have one monument sign at the highway, and we have, the plan is for eight different tenants, so above each door, we have a, a small placard above the door, right there, yeah. And that would identify the tenant within the space that is being allocated for the The ordinance allows a sign area equal to 25% of the facade, and we're nowhere near that. We are much lower than 25%, although we wouldn't want to have one large sign across the whole front of the building. But we have eight small signs aesthetically pleasing. It's also not directly visible from Route 33. We're kind of turned at an angle because of the way the property's situated, so we're at an angle to the highway, and it's only visible to pretty much those that park in front of the building. As you're traveling down the street, it's difficult to see at that angle any of the signage on the building. And the side facing Route 33 will not have any signs on it. So I don't think it'll be aesthetically unpleasing. I think it'll be a benefit aesthetically, it'll, it'll be a benefit to the visual environment the way the signs are laid out. I think it's not, it's not detrimental to the town's plan or the master plan.
So I think it'd be helpful if you gave us the actual square footage. So you said that 25% of the facade would be equal to X, and then what's the total sign area?
Right, is that on the plan? No, the architect plan, right here. So that's like a two by 10. That's 20, 28. One second. 2300, 500 feet. So, times 36. All right, so the building facade is about 2,300 square feet facing that side of the building. So 25% of that would be about a little shy of 600 square feet that's allowable. And we're proposing eight signs that are about 20, 20 to 30 square feet each. So we're about 240 square feet, where 25% would be about 600 square feet. So we're like less than half of what would be an allowable sign area.
Are those signs like two by 10, three by four? What are they?
They appear to be like two by 10. Those are 24-foot wide units. We're not quite half a unit. We're about 10 feet wide by two feet high. So 20 times 8 is 160. I'm rounding it to 200, and we're allowed like 600, so we're less than a half, maybe even a third of what's allowed. And if we have one tenant that takes two spaces, he'll still have eight signs, but he won't have eight signs, there'll be seven signs or six signs. Depends on how many tenants take how many of those modules. They're each 24 feet wide, so if one person takes two, there'll be seven signs, not eight signs. But as it is now with eight signs, it would be about a third or a half of the allowable sign area. And like I said, it's not facing the highway, it's facing the side yard pretty much, not really visible from the street.
Mr. DeFalco, can you please touch on the fence variance that's mentioned in both the planning and engineer review letters, and provide clarification for the board as to whether we are still seeking that variance?
Yeah, the revised plan eliminated the wall from the front yard, and there is no fence that's higher than four feet within the front setback. So I believe the variance request is not there anymore because of the revision to the plan. This was revised, and some of the comments in this letter had carried over to the new review letter, but I think if it was looked at again, you'll see that there's no fence that's higher than four feet and no wall within the front setback. So I don't think we need a variance for fences and walls.
I don't think the note on the plan says four. I think the note on the plan says six, which is why we issued the comment.
My plan says four. Four-foot-high rail fence along the front. The six-foot fence is behind the building and along the northerly property line. It stops at the dumpster, the six-foot-high fence. Does not approach this front setback. On Sheet 3. If you look at Sheet 3 on the screen, I could see it.
This is still the wrong plan, Rich. You can see right here that doesn't say four. So it's a plan that shows the relocated, but this appears to show a six-foot fence. Yeah, it's hard to read.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's very pixelated.
That's the plans that were submitted reference four feet on them, that were submitted to the board.
Laura, is that in that presentation folder?
Yes.
Just go to that one.
Well, I'm on there. Oh, go to our exhibit.
We can do that.
Here, let me find this one. Step away from the computer.
Does she have a paper?
I think she does.
Yeah, the latest plan's definitely showing four feet. I can zoom in on that.
That's the latest plan with the striping on the highway.
So these are the plans. In lieu of doing the presentation, why don't I go off the current plan?
That'd be great. Thank you, Laura.
So to clarify, Mr. DeFalco, we are no longer seeking the variance for a fence higher than four feet in the front area, correct?
Correct, and the wall has been pulled back to behind the setback line. So, correct, no variance request for that.
Mr. DeFalco, can you please walk the board through the waivers that we're requesting this evening?
That's in Laura's letter. All right, so the first waiver is the width of the driveway exceeding 24 feet. We have a bifurcated driveway at the entrance, and to pass a tractor-trailer truck into the site, the radius warrants a certain width so that we don't drive over the curbing and stay within the aisle. And that's the width that's shown in the plan. I believe it's around, it's around 40, 40 feet at the driveway. The curb cut because of the flares is in excess of 70 or 80 feet, but that's at the curb line.
Mr. DeFalco, can you speak up a little bit? We're having a little trouble hearing you over here.
Yes, the driveway opening. Just measure it for you. The driveway opening is approximately at the curb line 100 feet. The driveway width is about 46 feet at this narrowest point at the entrance, leading to 30-foot driveway. It has a six, a six-foot concrete island and an in-and-out driveway. The in is narrower than the out. No, the other way around, I'm sorry. The in is double width for the tractor-trailer. But that's the variance request. The ordinance says 24 feet, and we need the width for the DOT approval. The next waiver is curb ramps along the parking area. The plan was revised to comply with the ordinance. Again, this is a letter with some carryover comments. We moved it so that we don't exceed 65 feet to the ramps, between ramps. Landscaping between the parking area and the building shall be provided. We have no landscaping in the back of the building where we have the employee parking and garage doors right up to the building. So we wanted a waiver from the back. The back has no landscaping, except we have landscaping behind the parking, between the fence and the parking area, we have landscaping, but not at the building. Loading is the next comment, D. We don't have any dedicated loading space. We see the need is not a heavy loading here, there might be a UPS truck. It's designed for WB50, that's a very infrequent occurrence, and depending upon who's getting it.
What is the use that you're, that you can say that you know that you don't have loading?
Now, we have loading, but the...
Well, you made a conclusion about the kind of loading that you're going to have, so what are you basing your conclusion on?
We're, we're planning to have trade services here in some of the buildings, and the trade services, they may get, if it's an electrician, for instance, he may get a delivery of, of conduit or whatever he's going to get on a truck. Or if it's a cabinet guy, he may get cabinets delivered. But the frequency of that might be once a week. It's not going to be every day. We're going to get trucks going to eight units here. I, I just don't see that happening.
So that's one use. And we discussed that that wouldn't be the exclusive use of the building. So what are the other potential uses?
We have, we have a proposed use of a, of a private school, which could be a dance studio. And that's going to be mostly teachers with students. Probably don't get any deliveries there. And we have indoor recreation as a possible use for two of the units. Again, mostly patrons and instructors with some kind of a sport activity that wouldn't be heavy on the, on the truck delivery usage. And the trade services will have, we have a lot of banked parking on the site, and their vans may be more, the traffic will be their fleet services coming in, parking if need be. They have...
Mr. DeFalco, did you say banked parking?
Banked.
Like it doesn't exist?
We, we have it shown on the plan to be built if needed.
Well, but if you're not planning on building it, then how can you rely upon it with regard to this testimony?
No, I'm saying it was requested by the, by the board planner that we banked parking. We had it all to be built now, parking, and if we don't need it, we don't want to have extra blacktop.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, if the parking doesn't exist...
Right.
You can't say that the loading's going to work because we have this parking that doesn't exist. So you can bank the parking. What my question is, is I don't see how you can rely upon non-existent parking to support your argument for the loading. That's all.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. What I was inferring was that if these trade services come to fruition, and if they need those spaces, most of the traffic that you're going to see is going to be the trade service, the plumber's trucks, or the electrician's trucks, or the landscaper trucks, not going to be delivery trucks bringing supplies to these units. That's all I was saying. I didn't mean that it would take the place of, places for loading to take place.
So where would the, you know, so I'm an electrician or whatever, I'm getting my, my UPS or FedEx delivery. Where's the truck going to stop when it unloads to bring it to my door?
It would stop along the edge of that 30-foot driveway.
And, and that driveway, that's the one that's also an easement to access the other lot?
Yes, but it's sufficiently wide for a truck to park and for another truck to pass it. It's not a narrow driveway. 30 feet is very wide to have a truck that's almost three lanes wide of a, of a highway, 30 feet. There's also a driveway at each garage door, which will take loading for a smaller vehicle, but the tractor-trailer...
Mr. DeFalco, you parked a trade, how did you park? I'm looking at your parking calculations. The trade business, trade contractor, where ordinance reads is one space per each fleet vehicle or trailer in addition to the requirement for an office and warehouse space. Looks like your calculations are 5.8 spaces per unit, so where did you come up with that?
We took the number of spaces on the site, 73, subtracted the indoor recreation parking requirement for two of the units, and the private school calculation for one of the units. And the leftover spaces would be what the trade contractors would be sharing.
But that's not based upon our ordinance, which is the area. Our ordinance says it's one space per fleet vehicle in addition to the requirement per office and warehouse use. Office is one per 300 square feet, and warehouse is one per 5,000 square feet.
Right, so each unit is not even 2,500 square feet, so half a space for warehousing. Offices are very small. Maybe there's a space there. So we're going to have two spaces for the people in the office in the...
Mr. Chairman, I can't even understand where the, we would need a breakdown. So for the record, I want it broken down, office, warehouse, so that, that's what the plan should, should show. That's what our ordinance requires. Do you anticipate fleet vehicles?
That again depends on who rents the building.
So again, Mr. Chairman, again, aside from even the trees, I don't think the board is even in a position to entertain a final approval if we can't understand what potential trade contractor could be in here, whether or not they would have fleet vehicles, because that's another standard that we have in our parking calculation.
Well, I think, so they've agreed that they're only going to proceed with preliminary. However, with regard to the testimony that you've heard tonight, and correct me if I'm wrong, Laura and Jen, you would not be voting on the buffer tonight because that would await additional information after the meeting with Sherry on site. And I guess there's an issue as to whether a parking variance would be necessary, Laura? So that would, that would wait as well?
I don't have enough information to, to tell. And, and again...
Well, that's what I'm saying, we don't know.
The 73 counts into a fact, the banked parking. So I think we have to understand. So really, I think you only provide 57 spots on site, and then 16 banked. So it's unclear as to whether or not maybe the banked are necessary or not.
Can I ask a question? Each of the spaces, I'm just, I think this is so small, I can't read the square footage. I, I think one of them is 1488.
Which, which are you looking at?
This is four on these.
Oh, the architect plan.
The architect, yes. Each of the building spaces, square footage?
1988 is unit, the top one.
19.
1988, then 2141.
2141.
2114, 2335, 2548, 2920, and 2960. 3031 is the biggest one. And on the architect plan, it shows about a 300-square-foot office for each unit, which would require one parking space.
Mr. DeFalco, would you stipulate based on the recommendation of the board engineer that pending our return for final approval, that we amend the plans to incorporate the calking, parking calculations based on the ordinance so that it's more clearly defined for review?
Yes.
We asked that question specifically.
So that brings us to E of this meeting's letter.
Section E for a waiver, primary entrance shall be oriented towards streets, parks, and plazas. And our building faces the side yard of the site, which is at an angle to the street. Our next section is sidewalks along the street. We have proposed a sidewalk along the majority of the street from our intersection to the east, and we'll pay the fund for the sidewalk that we are not building to the west as it leads to the right-of-way of the state highway with no pedestrian access.
And Mr. DeFalco, the applicant has reviewed and acknowledged the stipulation to provide into the Hubble Township Sidewalk Trust Fund in the event that waiver's granted, correct?
Correct, 1988, yes. The, the other waiver is the facade should have a, the building facade over 50 feet should have a three-foot indentation. And on the north side of the building, that's unit number one, it does not have that, so the architect plan would be revised to show with the...
in the event that waivers granted, correct?
Correct. 1988, yes. The, the other waiver is the facade should have a, the building facade over 50 feet should have a three-foot indentation. And on the north side of the building, that's the unit number one, it does not have that. So the architect plan would be revised to show a three-foot jog at the proper interval accordance to the non-residential design standards of the township. That was also mentioned in the plan of letter.
So I, given the fact that we're only here for preliminary and, you know, if we get through everything, typically we defer architecture to a resolution compliance item. And the architect works with my office to come up with a design that may not 100% comply, but complies with the intent. And I would, instead of just unilaterally granting the waiver, since they are gonna have to come back anyway, I'd like a commitment of the applicant to have the architect work with our office to come up with a design in advance of the next meeting. They may or may not still need a waiver. I don't know.
Yeah, we agree to that. And also, Jen, in your letter, you've mentioned more than one. There's other architectural features that must be addressed. And those, all those points would be agreed to meet with you and go over all those architectural issues.
Great.
All right, so just briefly, let me talk about utilities on this. So there's gonna be a well and a septic system. There's no public water or sewer here. We did septic test pits witnessed by the County Board of Health. And we are confident that we can get an approved system for the use that's going to be here. We did a demand calculation on the plan. And we believe that we can get a septic permit. And there'll be a well in front of the building separated more than 100 feet from the septic.
And just to confirm, the septic design takes into account the potential for a school?
I'm sorry.
The potent, the septic design took into account a potential school?
A potential. Oh, yes, it does.
How many students?
The calculation on the grading plan shows that.
How many students?
Based on indoor recreation, commercial at .125 gallons per square foot per day.
That's not a school standard, right? You said it's on your grading plan. I'm looking for these calc.
On the lower left corner.
Sheet four, Rich?
Sheet four, above the scale.
Well, just with regard to, to the school issue, Jen, you might know. Is that how we define school in our ordinance? That it would include a dancing school? Or is it something more academic that our ordinance refers to?
Our ordinance permits indoor recreation. And it also permits commercial schools, which is like a daycare. You know what I mean?
Or like a Sullivan Learning Center or something?
Exactly.
Okay. So would, in your opinion, a, a dance school would fall within that broad definition?
It would fall under, I would, I would say it falls under indoor recreation.
Okay.
And for clarification, we're not seeking to commit to that use. We're using as an example as for purposes of calculations and intensity. But we would ensure that it is something that is permitted and falls within the definition of indoor recreation. We're not locked into any specific type of school or facility, just for clarification.
Right. So just for, for clarification, we did speak to the zoning office about dance school. And they told us that the dance school would be a commercial school. Because we said, why isn't it indoor recreation? And they said, no, it would be a dance, that's why we put dance school on, on the site plan. If that falls under the indoor recreational use, then we're not looking for a school. We're looking for indoor recreation, for a dance school.
Both are permitted.
Well, I think Laura was just asking in terms of how you arrived at the conclusion for the, the septic. That, that was the purpose of the, the question.
Yeah.
Did you receive anything from the zoning officer with regard to that decision?
No, it was a phone call. The site has a stormwater basin to handle water quality and quantity and recharge according to the towns and state ordinances and regulations. All the roof drains are piped directly to the basin underground. There's a fence surrounding, like I said before, the north side and the east side of the property up to the end of the dumpsters, six-foot solid fence for both security and to block any views from the east, which would be from the firehouse lot or from the commercial lot to the east. And also from the residential to the north. The residential lot to the north that owns the rights to the easement through the site has agreed to the realignment of the easement to come into our access driveway and to abandon the rights to the easement that run along the Westerly property line. The plan shows the restriping of the highway in front of the site in both east and west directions with the center lane being striped except for a left turn in. And our widening of the, of the state highway on our side of the, of the highway by about six or eight feet. It varies. It tapers.
Right out only?
The other fence around the property is a four-foot rail fence
Right out, right in, right out.
around the stormwater basin.
I don't believe that.
No fencing is proposed along the west side of the property.
Mr. DeFalco, I want to take you through the engineer review letter. I'm on page six, number three, which has items to address with the board. We have already addressed a majority of these items on here. So I just want to touch on the ones that we have not already addressed. So that would be 3B. I know we discussed, we haven't yet selected or the applicant has not yet selected the exact tenants that will be in here. But can you provide general information based on whether the hours of operation, refuse management, et cetera, will comply with the local ordinances in the area once the tenants are selected?
Yes, they will, of course. As far as the trash collection, depending on the use, we have two large enough dumpsters that can be picked up more than once a week if need be.
And then I draw your attention to 3I regarding the screening view of air conditioning units from the public right-of-way. Can you provide testimony that any air conditioning units will be properly screened and where they're proposed to be located?
Yes, they will be on the roof and they will be screened from view from all directions. But there'll be roof-mounted units screened from view with the screen on the roof.
And then moving to 3J, can you confirm compliance with ordinance section article four regarding noise, glare, pollutants, et cetera?
They will comply with the town's ordinance, yes. And K, EV parking, we will provide two EV charging, make-ready spaces or regular spaces. I'll have to check on that. But two spaces are required for EV, electric vehicles. And those would be on the west side of the building, adjacent to the building.
And then I want to move through the technical engineering review number two. If you could just point out if there are any items in here in this technical engineering review number two that we cannot comply with and stipulate as to the remainder of the items that we can comply with?
Okay, briefly, yep. Yes, with regard to A and B, we, we can comply and address those items. We agree to comply with those. With regard to C, I think if I meet with the engineer at Laura's office, we can resolve the stormwater and whether or not some of the items will be addressed verbatim or they'll be subject to looking at the way calculations were prepared. And maybe there'll be revised comment, but we agree with stormwater. We know the bottom line is to meet all the codes. And we will meet with them and take care of that. We agree with that. Again, same with landscaping. The landscaping talks about changing some of the species.
Mr. DeFalco, can you agree in totality to our technical engineering comments?
I believe so, Laura.
Okay.
I just didn't want to say yes if there's one thing that I didn't agree with. But I'm, I'm reading it and they all look.
If need be, we can address that when you return for final.
Okay, that's fine. Yes.
Mr. DeFalco, I think, you know, we need to get a little more specific. And we talked about it a little bit, but with, with regard to use, because the application has evolved. When it was originally proposed, you, or the applicant was proposing a trade contractor business, which is a conditional use in the zone, it did not satisfy all the conditions, which would have divested this board of jurisdiction. So the evolution was that it then became a flex use building, which is permitted.
Yes.
And a trade contractor business is one of the permitted uses within that umbrella of a flex use. But I, you know, we discussed this during the TRC. I want to place it on the record. You can't simply build the same thing and call it flex. So this building would not be permitted to be 100% trade contractor, correct?
Correct.
And I think there was a proposed distribution that, that was discussed, wasn't there?
There was.
60%?
Yes, 60% is the, the restriction under the definition of flex for any one user, 60%. So when we had the TRC, I think that's what Mr. Quintero's referring to, that 60% of the building can be used for trade contractor and the balance, 40% other permitted uses in the zone to make it flex. Otherwise, we would have an issue.
And that's the applicant's understanding, correct?
It is the applicant's understanding that it was discussed at the TRC. Obviously, if the board is inclined to otherwise grant the preliminary relief subject.
Well, hold on, no, 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 let's, let's back up. I didn't ask if you agreed that we discussed it. I don't, I mean, that, that obviously happened. I'm, I'm asking whether the applicant is agreeing that that is how they're proceeding tonight with the 60-40 split.
That was not our initial intention to be locked into the 60-40 split. But if that is the recommendation of the professionals, then the applicant will agree to that.
This is jurisdictional in nature, because now I am unsure what it is you're proposing. What, what is it that you're proposing then?
As I was stating, that was not our initial intention this evening. However, if that is the recommendation of the board engineer, the board planner, and the board attorney,
No, I'm asking, what was your initial intention this evening then? I'm trying to understand what the applicant was requesting.
Our initial intention was to not have a specific percentage. We would comply with the ordinance. But he proposed the two indoor recreation spaces and the other three potentially for contractor, trade contractor offices. We just didn't want to be locked in to a certain percentage. But again, if that is the recommendation, the applicant would have agreed to comply with that.
I don't think it's a recommendation. I think it's a requirement in the ordinance. I'm a little, I have to tell you, frankly, I'm a little bit surprised because I thought this was absolutely discussed and agreed upon. And, you know, we moved on and we were able to tackle a thorny issue. But I guess we were not.
Well, as I just indicated, the applicant would agree to comply with the stipulation that no more than 60% be trade contractors units.
That's kind.
For clarification.
And that's, and that's not 60% of the tenant spaces. That's 60% of the square footage of the building. So the building's 20,000 square feet, 12,000 can be trade contractor, 8,000 has to be something else.
Correct.
So that's how we're proceeding with that, with that understanding. All right. I just wanted to make sure before we got any farther that that, that was clear. Did you have anything else, Mr. DeFalco?
I don't, no.
All right, then I have another question. With regard to the driveway easement, I mean, you sort of touched upon it before, but I want to make sure we have some very clear testimony on the record that emergency, township emergency vehicles can all access that rear lot using that, that driveway easement?
Yes, they can.
Have they reviewed it, like the fire?
Fire and traffic.
We're gonna have Mr. Kennel testify as to the traffic testimony as well. So that may be in his testimony.
Okay, that's fine.
Next.
And then I would, if there is an approval, I would recommend that the board require that the easement agreement and maintenance responsibilities be submitted for review and approval of the board's professionals?
Yep.
So I have, Mr. Chair.
So we'll do that, yeah.
Yeah, I just have one question. You're, you're designing the driveway for tractor-trailer. This is, there's no loading docks. This is just surface loading, right, in and out of the buildings?
Correct.
So it's most likely gonna be box truck, lift gate?
We believe SU 30 would be the typical unit bringing supplies or materials. But as a worst-case scenario, we want to make sure that if a tractor-trailer did have to deliver something, you get a large truck bringing a box this big sometimes. But if that case, we want to make sure the traffic driveway would, would work. So it's designed for a large, large.
Larger, right, instead of the smaller.
It was designed for an SU 30, though. That's what we have turning movements for.
Say that again?
It was designed for an SU 30, not for a larger truck wheelbase to come through. I mean, I, you're, I'm on your turning template.
No, the revised plan was designed for.
This is your revised plan. I, I mean, these are the plans that were just submitted to the board. 12, 5, 2024. So this is the plan that the, the board most recently received. This is sheet 10, which shows an SU 30.
Correct. So for final, we would stipulate that, as I mentioned to Mr. Rizzo in your office, we would give you the template for the WB 50, which was what the split bifurcated driveway with the island in it, which is not that plan, would show. We would provide that as a condition of final.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm just concerned because you're also still giving a preliminary. And it's information we don't have. I know I have some questions for the traffic engineer as to whether or not his report is reflective of the max 60% on the flex use.
So your professional opinion is that we need more information?
Yeah.
Right?
I, I'm getting more and more uncomfortable as the night goes on and more and more information is, is up in the air. It's just making me, it's, it's making it difficult for us to provide you with guidance on how to proceed.
If I may suggest, we are gonna have Scott Kennel come up. He could potentially address his report that was submitted as well. That may provide some clarification before the board renders its ultimate decision on, you know, how they want to proceed on that item. But obviously, that's up for the board, just a suggestion that he will be coming to testify next.
Okay. You're done with your testimony? Any questions? None? Okay, I'm just gonna open it to the public just for this testimony right here. Okay, and I see none, closed to the public. And thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Scott Kennel, our traffic expert, to testify.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide? This board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Sure. Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L. McDonough and Ray Associates located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates with over 35 years of traffic transportation planning experience. I've appeared before this board, as well as the zoning board, on many occasions, and testified in over 2,000 site plan applications, as well as been qualified by New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert.
We met you before and we accept your credentials.
Thank you. First, I'll address what was in our traffic report and then I'll address some of the other questions that were raised during Mr. DeFalco's testimony.
Do you want to sit down or you're?
I'm good right here. The report, the latest report submitted is dated November 26, 2024. And that took into consideration traffic counts that were conducted in November of 2022 to develop the AM and PM peak hour traffic conditions along the site frontage. And as. And as the board, I'm sure, is aware, as well as the professionals, this section, Route 33, has a heavy traffic volume, where in the morning, peak hour, is approximately a two-way volume of 1,900 vehicles. And in the afternoon, peak hour, it's approximately 1,700 vehicles. The predominant direction is westbound in the morning, heading towards freehold, and then eastbound with a return commute. Based on the site plan proposed here with 20,000 square feet of flex space, the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual was consulted, which is also considered by NJDOT. And we determined that 20,000 square feet, this site could develop, could have as many as 26 AM peak hour trips and 29 PM peak hour trips. And again, that's representing just 60 minutes. That's what we focus our analysis on. There's going to be traffic in and out of this site. It could be for a three- to four-hour period in the morning, which is typical with this type of use with multiple tenants. We determined, based on the area roadway network, location of neighborhoods, and the traffic patterns, that traffic could really be distributed 50% to and from the east and 50% to and from the west. And we consider a design year of 2025 by utilizing the New Jersey Department of Transportation background traffic growth rate, which was a 2% per year that we utilized. And then, once we superimposed the site traffic onto the expanded traffic volumes, as detailed on Table 3 of our report, we conducted an analysis to determine the levels of service for vehicles entering and exiting the site. We considered the improvements along Route 33, which show restriping along the site frontage, as well as widening to provide a dedicated left turn lane into the site, basically a refuge area, which, given the volume of traffic on this section, Route 33, given the fact that just to the west of here, traffic is merging from the freeway and from Business 33. So in my opinion, this is a significant improvement to provide a dedicated left turn lane. This is something also recommended by NJDOT during our review. So with that and the exiting movements, they're going to operate a level service E. Basically, there are delays in around 45 seconds per vehicle. That is consistent with other commercial uses along this area. So basically, the level of service for exiting traffic is consistent with what you see at the Autotech car sales, the Bobcat facility, or even the cabin. And so as far as this type of use, which is kind of on the lower end of its intensity, the operational aspects will be consistent, as with other driveways along this section of 33. The only difference is, obviously, we're providing a dedicated left turn lane into the site.
Is that level of service based primarily because it's going to take a while for a left turn movement?
That's correct.
And is the, I know you kind of have a boulevard kind of access. Is the exiting movement wide enough to have a car being able to make a right while there's a car waiting to make a left?
It's really set up to have, is a wider single lane. And again, we're working with DOT. DOT has criteria as far as curb line openings. So the island there is really, the intent is to provide a wider or a longer curb line opening, so we can accommodate the larger vehicles. That island will be mountable. So I mean, again, if you have a larger vehicle, WB50, tractor-trailer, infrequent, they can still ride over that and still get off, get off the highway. So basically, the design is driven by the type of vehicles utilizing site, as well as the DOT driveway design criteria. Could we have it as a two-lane exit? Yes. But again, it's subject to NJDOT, because now we're widening or lengthening the curb line opening.
And if you increase.
It's a balance.
But if you increase that, would you obtain a better level of service?
You would have a better level of service, yes, because you wouldn't be holding up the right turning vehicles exiting the site.
And can you explain to the board what a level of service E equates to? And again, levels of service go from A to F. So if you could just explain what a level of service E is.
For an unsignalized intersection such as this, or stop sign control, a level of service E is delays from 35 to 50 seconds. 50 seconds is considered an F level of service.
And we're at 45?
We're showing 45 to 47 seconds of delay. And again, that's primarily attributed to the high volume of traffic along this section. And that is something that, you know, is reviewed by DOT as well, but they take into consideration the nature of the roadway. You know, this, this site is not a candidate to, in my opinion, to prohibit left turns out, because there are no U-turn facilities to the west to accommodate larger vehicles. And again, you have, you have a, just to the west of here, there is a contractor's yard or contractor that has similar type vehicles, and they have full movements permitted out of that driveway, and that's to the west of our site. And they also have a dedicated left turn and a refuge area. So it's kind of a similar type of driveway configuration we're proposing here as that, what exists to the, to the west of the site.
And when you modeled your traffic, what land use description did you use?
I used warehousing. That is, and used the equations, which generated a higher traffic generation. I used the average trip rates, which is usually utilized for larger buildings. But for this, we used equations. If I recall, there was a question of using contractors' warehouse trip rates. When you, when I review the NJ, the ITE data on that, those facilities are less than 10,000 square feet, and there are only three, try remember, three or four different data points, where there are more data points with the warehousing land use. So that's why I'd use that and use the higher trip generation with the equations, rather than the average trip rates.
Are you concerned at all that we're, that it's not going to be, in fact, that type of user? That it's a 60% trade and then 12,000 square feet of other permitted uses, which could include dancing schools or indoor recreation facilities or other commercial schools like a daycare?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things with that. I mean, obviously, there are other uses permitted within this zone that are not as high traffic generator as a dance studio or recreation. Recreation facility or dance studios usually are later in the, in the peak hour and evening. So they, you know, they wouldn't be overlapping. And again, as far as a recreation such as batting cages, things of that nature, they take up a lot of space. So I don't think the traffic generation would be much greater than what we're projecting here. Obviously, a dance studio is something different. That one could have a higher traffic generation. But my understanding is those uses were being considered, just from the parking perspective, as a worst case, but not that they have a tenant or they're really committed to do a dance studio.
Well, maybe. Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, I'm back to being concerned even on preliminary, because, one, I'm concerned that we're at level of service E. So we're, we're talking about a new driveway that's near capacity. I'm concerned that we're choking in, so the exit is only like one lane of traffic, and that's what's causing that increased delay. And I'm concerned that what the traffic we modeled may not be indicative of what we're going to have here. So a couple of things there. And then the other thing is, and again, I would certainly defer to Mr. Kennel, why haven't we done updated traffic counts from 2022 to 2024? I mean, I just think that, hearing what the use is, understanding those representations, I would prefer to see the traffic report reflective of that. I would prefer to see the level of service reviewed. I understand that the DOT has jurisdiction, but we are tasked with site ingress and egress. And I'm concerned with it being at a level of service E, specifically the exiting movement, and the, and the timing of the traffic counts.
If I could just follow up, as far as a level of service, when you have it as a shared driveway, as depicted here, it's an averaging of the right turn and left turns. As a two-lane approach, it's expected that will show it as an F level service, just, just the way the modeling works. Obviously, the right turn is expected to be somewhere on level service E. So just advising the board, there's an averaging that goes on with, with the left and right turning vehicles when you consider the analysis as a single lane. But there are benefits if DOT approves with a two-lane approach, where the right turning vehicles would not be held up by left turning vehicles.
What's the status of your review of, at the DOT?
We had comments back over the summer. We are waiting for, to have this hearing to get some other comments before we go back to the, to DOT. So we're in the midst of our application. And, you know, based on some of the comments you've heard tonight, we'll take that back to NJDOT.
And the only thing I also want to just call your attention to is it's not just AM, it's AM and PMP are at the level of service E.
See, yeah, I want to go back to my original, you know, with this tractor-trailer concern, the driveway wider on the inbound, narrower on the outbound. Could a tractor-trailer, in your opinion, could a tractor-trailer potentially be exiting and having to turn into incoming traffic temporarily to get into a right turn lane?
I don't know, but so are we talking about entering traffic or?
Exiting.
Exiting trucks.
Exiting.
Well, exiting trucks, and the way it's been designed, at least for the tractor-trailers, is they would circle in a counterclockwise position, pattern, so that they would be exiting and coming down the, the west side of the site, the drive aisle. So they'd be perpendicular to Route 33 when they arrived there.
So is this one-way?
No, it's not. It's two-way. But they, it's been designed so that you can accommodate the tractor-trailers to be able to, because there was a comment raised earlier in one of the reviews that if tractor-trailers were going clockwise, that they may block the entering traffic. So that's.
I'm not, I'm.
Because you can't stop it, really.
With the left, the left turning lane, does the existing roadway have enough width to accommodate the left turning lane for a shift? Or do you have to widen the pavement there? And if so, is it, how much, if any, is it encroaching on the other side of the roadway where the cabin rests?
Well, we're not widening at all. We're holding that southerly curb line and widening on the, on the site side and adjusting the tapers, so it curves on the site side. I mean, one is, we were, we took that into consideration, because, you know, they have paved parking and such right close to Route 33. There's also utility poles on that south side. So basically, design is taken into account to hold the existing edge of pavement on the cabin side and do all the widening on the site side to be able to accommodate the left turn lane. That completes my testimony.
Any questions?
Did you look at, there was a question earlier raised about, like, emergency vehicles being able to access the lot in the back to the easement? Did you look at that at all?
Well, going to that, first of all, there was a question whether the fire department, I'm not aware of it. I haven't been involved in aspect. I, my understanding is that the plans are distributed. But I have not had any conversations with the fire department. But, but my review of that is, is that, that the driveway connection design could accommodate fire emergency vehicles back to that site.
And that's even with the testimony that UPS or box trucks would be parked on the side of that driveway while they're making deliveries? The fire truck could, could proceed past a parked delivery van?
Yes, I mean, that, those aisle widths, and that's consistent with what's required by HOA, is 30 feet in width. A UPS truck would have a width of approximately eight feet, eight and a half feet. So there'd still be plenty of width for an emergency vehicle to bypass. And, you know, again, if emergency vehicles coming on site, it would, it's likely the driver will be in the vehicle and they could move their UPS vehicle. But, I mean, you could also have UPS deliveries towards the rear of the site. Again, these units go from west to east.
Well, but the testimony was, they're going to park on the side of the driveway.
Well, they could, but they could also park in the back, too, because we have a 30-foot drive aisle along the east side of the building.
But that's not, I mean, that's not part of this application, that that's going to be the designated parking area, right? Or is it now? I mean, if that's what they have.
I guess it could depend on the tenants, because we have garage spaces and, and tenant spaces, driveways on the east side of the building. It depends, I guess, on the UPS driver and the, and the tenants. And they, do they function in the front of the building or the back of the building?
But for purposes of my question, you're saying it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter. It's, it's, the 30-foot width is sufficient width to accommodate emergency vehicles and get around a vehicle that's staged for a quick delivery along that drive aisle.
And could you testify relative to parking? Again, I think your report last had it at 67 spaces, 18 of which were green banked. Can you just talk about that, especially given the change in users, as well as?
Well, if there is a dance studio or something more intensive, then I'll say traditional flex space, business-oriented, contractors or office or some type of other uses permitted, then those bank spaces would have to be provided. And just the same as if we had a contractor with fleet vehicles, depending on what their, their number of vehicles are, so.
So is it fair for you to say that even you might need additional information, given the users you've heard tonight as to the parking plan and whether or not it's adequate?
Not knowing who the tenants are, yes. That's, it's a, I think the thing, the key thing is, is that the site's been designed to accommodate those spaces from a drainage perspective, which is always a critical aspect. The thing is, if you bank spaces, what's the time and what's the trigger for it, correct?
I do have a copy of the Fire Bureau Site Plan Review. There are four comments. Some of them may have been done, I don't know, but the final plan would have to depict all of this. The proposed fire lanes would have to be depicted on the plan. I don't know if they are. Are they?
I think they're.
Mr. DeFalco has indicated, yes.
Yeah, I think they're shown by.
And then that would have to be subject to the review and approval of the Fire Bureau. The, and I think the, that 30-foot wide roadway is depicted going around the entire building, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then also, and I think most significantly, the Fire Bureau wanted to have a fire truck circulation diagram depicted.
There was a plan provided by Mr. DeFalco. He's, I know for SU30, if it needs to be a fire emergency. If I could ask, what's the date of that, too?
It's from March.
From March.
So it does not consider that driveway connection to the back property? Because I think that's more of a recent, more recent addition.
Okay, well, then that.
Then that needs to.
They did get those plans. I just haven't gotten any additional.
Okay.
Well, then that would be important for them, just to confirm, you know, that they're okay with the access.
Understood.
Also, Mr. Kennel, when you did your analysis of, you know, peak hours and traffic volumes, traffic counts, it took into account whatever the traffic is that's generated by that rear property?
Correct. From my understanding, it's infrequent that maybe one vehicle during the peak hour.
What's the use of that, of that property?
My understanding, it's a single family, but there may be, they may have a home business that operates out there.
It's identified as residential, but I don't disagree. If you look at the aerial, and we've had this conversation, Ron, on other sites, that just because there's commercial vehicles doesn't necessarily mean there's a business. But I do agree that there's some stuff back there that makes you think it's more than just a house.
Is that what it's zoned for? Or is that just like an older use that has continued to exist?
I think it's zoned residential behind you.
All right.
Oh, no. It's AT4. Behind that lot is own residential.
And I may also state that I did, I should qualify that in our traffic projections, we also include. we also include, included, because they weren't occupied, the three warehouses. One, it's already built, and two others that have been approved on Fairfield Road just south of 33. So, traffic generation from those approved warehouses were included in our analysis just for the board's benefit.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other, any questions from the board?
I had another question. I thought I heard you say before that if that exit lane were to go to two lanes, that that, the service level might drop to F. Is that true?
It, then analyzes as a specific left turn lane and right turn lane. So, then, the left turn would, would likely have delays in excess of fifty seconds, because, again, what we provided here is usually an average of the delays between left and right turn movements. I would expect the right turn movements to be in the range of twenty-five to thirty-five seconds, and then the left turns are higher. So, that's when, you know, I come up with a single lane approach at forty-five seconds. It's because it's, the, the software is averaging out between the two type of movements.
So, if they were to go to two lanes, you're saying the right turn would be like a level C, and the left lane would be like a level F?
F, correct.
Yeah, but F would require mitigation, correct? You wouldn't, you wouldn't propose an intersection with a movement.
There's, no, I mean, that's not, it's not a, a, a situation that's mitigated. It's, it's, it's a situation that's common with many of the other businesses in the area because of the traffic volumes. The, the mitigation is if you provide two lanes, because you're, you're improving the delay for the right turn movement out. But there's really no other mitigation beyond making it a two-lane approach.
That was going to be my next question, is is there like, once it drops to service level F, is there something that's needed because of the, the poor service or the, the long service time?
I mean, obviously, people think, okay, a traffic signal, but one, you're not going to signalize a private driveway, and two, the traffic volumes don't even meet the warrants for a signal, even if this was a public, public street, so.
But I think as board members, we would certainly want to review the site, the safety of that ingress egress point.
Seems preferable to have two lanes, right? Am I wrong in that?
I, I, yes.
Because like, if I'm someone like six cars back waiting to make a right, and there's five cars in front of me making a left, I'm waiting like an insane amount of time.
Correct. Particularly if a dancing school lets out, then you have anger.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right. Gymnastics, dancing school, whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open it up to the public just for the traffic, and I don't see anybody from the public, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Close it on the public. Next.
We have no further testimony this evening.
So, I think, Mr. Chair...
Yeah, yeah, because there's a, I've been writing down a lot of exceptions here, so...
So, I just want to, you know, we still have to hear from the public in terms of testimony if, if we're going to bring it to conclusion tonight. But I just wanted to read to you the standard for preliminary site plan approval, when they're just coming in for preliminary. And this is Section 46 of the Municipal Land Use Law, and it's a quote, says, "The site plan and any engineering documents to be submitted shall be required," and it uses the word tentative, "tentative form for discussion purposes for preliminary approval." So, there's KSA that talks about, you know, certain minimal information that's necessary, though, when you're seeking preliminary. That goes essentially towards feasibility of the drainage and stormwater management, also availability of water is one that the courts have said should really be addressed at preliminary. But what the statute talks about, you know, like, as I said, tentative and discussion form. So, I think, you know, it's really the discretion of the board tonight and your comfort level with how much information you have, whether you think enough, you know, has been given for preliminary, understanding there's no work that's going to be done, and all these things need to happen at final. Everything needs to be depicted, or whether you think you still need more information even to reach that tentative and discussion purpose comfort level.
Yeah, I mean, you know, with the, with the buffer, right, the buffer exception, I, I know you agreed to the sixty percent trade easement agreement condition, you know, the final is a whole separate thing, the fire bureau, bureau review. I mean...
The architecture as well.
And the architect, correct, yeah. The waiver with, you know, meeting with the architect, correct, and, and then the site visit.
And I think Laura wanted, they were going to break down a little bit more of the parking calculations, I think, for you, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, do we have enough information to move forward? Or is that up to us to...
That's up to you.
Okay.
What I would recommend, I guess, is maybe members of the public have thoughts on it, if there are any members. I would recommend opening...
I can open, yeah, I can, okay, anybody from the public that have anything, any comments, please move, come forward. Okay, I'll close it, close it to the public. Does anybody on the phone?
When you're, when you're making your decision, Mr. Chair, members of the board, the board could also decide, you know what, some of these unknowns may impact any number of variances. So, you could decide if you wanted, just to give a preliminary approval and not give any variance relief and defer at all, you know, till final, when you have greater information, if that provided you with greater comfort level as, as well. But, so, I would say, you know, all those things are on the table. One, just telling them, look, I think you got to come back.
Right.
And give us more...
Right, because the final is going to be the final, and that's when they're going to get the, the go-no-go.
Or, or to say, look, all right, we have enough for preliminary, but you got to come back for final, and there's going to be a lot of conditions, and we're not granting you variance relief. That's going to be something that you're going to have to address at final, and we have the totality of, of all the information.
Okay.
Do we have five minutes to just briefly conference?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
The board will take a five-minute recess.
Provide sufficient plans, improves at least for preliminary approval this evening, although we initially applied for preliminary and final. We would like to go ahead and seek preliminary approval tonight and then return for our final approval, subject to the items that were discussed this evening, the site visit with regard to the buffers and the clearing, the turnaround plans, et cetera. We would agree to work with the engineer, the architect in the interim and come back for our final preliminary approvals granted this evening.
There's a lot of unknowns, right? So, I don't know that, you know, if we put it to a vote, you know, in fairness to everybody, you know, I just don't think there's enough information for us to want to put it to a vote, for us to move forward. So, you know, there, you've got the, the architect review, you've got the fire bureau review, they've got the, the buffer. There's, there's just, just a lot in here, and, and I haven't captured anything. That's, you know, a lot of the exceptions, so, and I'll, I'll ask the board, you know, whether it's enough information that we move, move forward with the vote or have them come back with more information.
I, I would ask that they come back.
I mean...
I agree as well.
The packet needs to be updated, too, that we received. I, I would say they come back.
Okay, so, that's, Mr. Chairman, if that's the board's feeling, then what we would do is, again, we haven't adopted the official 2025 calendar yet. We have the reorganization meeting scheduled, so we can carry this to the reorganization meeting for scheduling purposes.
January...
What I would ask counsel and the applicant's team is between now and reorg, if you guys can just, you know, figure out how much time you think you need on your side to get all of that information together, then, you know, we'll select a date at reorg that fits within, you know, your, your timeframe.
Absolutely. We'll regroup tomorrow and come up with a general timeframe and, and advise.
All right, so then, let me just make an announcement. The application of SMC Properties LLC, case number SP-1123, will be carried to the board's January 2nd, 2025 meeting. It is a live meeting beginning seven o'clock here in the meeting, meeting room at Town Hall. It will be for scheduling purposes only, and there'll be no further notice to property owners.
Before you go, can you just grant on the record an extension of time for the board to act on the application?
Yes, we grant for the purposes of the record an extension for the board to act on this application.
Through, what's your date?
Through January...
Thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, what do we got? Master plan?
Nothing at this time, but I just want to remind everybody that we will be working on the housing element and fair share plan of our municipal master plan next year as the regulatory requirements start to kick in in January.
Executive session, is there any recommendations?
We need to go into executive session tonight, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you.
Just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Boom.
Thank you.
Thank you.